Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Moment of silence, please.
Just, just a couple announcements to lead into that during this moment of silence if we can remember, patrol sergeant Dave Stump, and then also congratulate and consider Michael Outly's. This is his last week as community liaison before he takes a new position with the US Department of Justice as a conciliation specialist headquartered in Pittsburgh. His work there will be facilitating, mediating, and training for community problem-solving abilities and strengthening to address conflicts.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you allowed us to assemble into these chambers on this day. We just ask by the power of your spirit that you help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the city and its residents. We want you to, yeah, to just pause and send special prayers to the officer who was shot and to his family, and we wish him a speedy recovery, oh Lord. We ask that you look out over everyone else who has lost loved ones and is in mourning and those who are in need, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to send a special message out to a young man. He's with us today. He was a young man, Jamal, who got shot, and he'll be introduced to us shortly.
Would you read it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 19th city council meeting and bills for payment on August 4th and 11th, whatever those dates are. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
We have a presentation from Jacob Jones, executive director of CAM. Give us an update on some of the community programs.
Thank you, Council, for your time. So I have a brief PowerPoint just to go over kind of what we've done this quarter so far. As I mentioned, we do receive funds from the city of Erie, so we like to be a good steward of that and show you kind of the value we're providing and helping our citizens overall. So when you look at our second slide here, you can see from April to June, some of the things we've done in 2023, increasing our membership, the number of reservations that citizens have made over the last three months. You can see that there were 237 separate reservations in that time period, and people love working with the DSLRs and the field cameras, so a lot of people are out there taking photos of our community, taking photos of events, putting them together, creating videos of events as they happen across there. On the programming side of things on our channels, on Spectrum, Vnet, Roku, Apple TV, and our video on demand services, we had 1,014 total shows for a total amount of programming of over 3,000 hours for the community that are all provided commercial-free and accessible to anybody who has the internet, cable, or any number of platforms that are available. We go on. And our video on demand as well has been increasing. We're averaging about 400 people per show and with approximately 6,000 unique viewers per year accessing that content through our website. And then on the educational side, we taught 15 different classes with 35 different residents, which covered a wide variety of media production, video production, and media education, so they can continue to produce the type of content that they want to see in the community. Some highlights from some new programming we brought in for the community. One is Films for Justice. This is a video series that discusses in-depth issues from things like nuclear weapons proliferation, the wrapping up of the civil war in Syria, things going on in Ukraine, historical context of American slavery, all these types of things. So these are 45-minute to 60-minute programs that are really in-depth. They have a ton of great experts on them, so there's a lot of really great content there for people to enjoy and engage with. The next one is a show that recently just wrapped up its first season. This is Health Hits Experience. This is a completely Erie-based production, so all of the crew, all of the actors, all of the sets that were designed and everything were shot, filmed, edited, and produced here in Erie. They produced, I believe, over 185 hours of content last year, and they're about to enter their season two as well. So this is a great kind of thing to show what the citizens in our area are making and what people are engaging with. The next one is some of our more civic-minded things. So not only do we cover a lot of the meetings for the city of Erie, including city council right now, we also have a lot brought in from the state as well. So the PA House and some of the PA Senate and their subcommittees are on there where they're discussing issues that are relevant to all of us. Just last week, we put up the PA Liquor Control Board's meeting where they were discussing how liquor licenses are going to be handled in the future, the number of them, things that directly impact a lot of small businesses in our area. And then the next one is Both Sides of the Bar, which is a program that recently restarted. It focuses on issues of criminal justice and the prison system within the United States. So they actually talk with experts, they talk with people who have been in the system, both as people who are incarcerated and people who worked with people in that system. And it's a really interesting program to see a lot of aspects of the prison and criminal justice system that we don't get to see every day. And then lastly, just some of the in-kind support we provide to citizens. So any citizen can become a member for $60 per year and get access to everything you see on screen there. Lot of different things go on. We just finished up our first summer camp with the Urban University through the Erie City Mission, and we're actually starting one next week, so we're very excited about that, and that's all I have for you for this quarter.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to repository sales. Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? Means available for public comments. If you have a public comment, you have five minutes. Please present your name and address at the beginning. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Roosevelt Benjamin. I reside in Erie, PA. This is a friend of mine. I want to introduce you guys to him. About two Mondays ago, Jamal is a member of Mel Witherspoon Summer League, and he was accidentally shot on Monday, two Mondays ago. So I'm here to speak on basically something that Mr. Spoon, we call safe hours at Spoon's Summer Court, and those are the hours between 5:00 and 9:30, 5:00 and 9:00 o'clock every day. I'm a big part of my community. I know a couple people on the panel, and I just think that we need more of those safe hours. Spoon's been doing it for 33 years. It's, that's just not enough for our community right now. Gunfire, rapid gunfire, stuff that's happening in our community is just, is just too much right now, and it's hard to control with, like, I have a group myself. It's called MLC, Nonprofit 501(c)(3), and a couple of the members of our group is here, and we have our boots on the ground every day in the community, patrolling spoons, just patrolling the areas. No, we have no funding, we have nothing, but that's our passion. And I'd just like to speak to you guys about something that is put into our community is our leaders. And nothing negative, but at the same time, we can't let you guys choose who our leaders in our communities, community are, and we don't see them. I don't want you to say this guy, this guy, and this guy because he sits on a pool pit and he has a high rank in a different job is our community leaders. I'm in that community every day, 24 hours a day, from the west side to the east side, and we have bad gang problems. Our kids can't cross State Street if you're from the east side. Our kids from the west side can't cross State Street because of the west side or the east side. So those are the problems that we have, and we have a couple members here with our group that are able to go into these communities and do research and do outreach to help our community get better, but it's the funding problems. I'm not saying you guys fund them, but the funding goes to the people up here. These kids never see the funding. These kids don't see who you guys and who the community and who the media portray as our role models. We don't see them, and I know I am one. I see him every day in passing, every single day, personally go pick him up and sign him up for spoons and all his friends. Those are the leaders in our community who need, who need the help. Just because they just, they know people in the back door, shake those hands in the back door in the back door meetings, doesn't make them our leader. Like, we need you to walk with us. We need you to show up at spoons. We have 500, 600 kids there. Come be a leader there and meet these kids who's not getting anything from you guys, not you guys, but, you know, getting the funding. These are the guys who's not getting anything. I mean, nothing. So that's the concern in our community. We hear gunshots. Maybe you guys didn't even notice it was a nine-year-old that was shot the other day, but we are in touch with our community every single day. As soon as it happened, went to the mom house, talked to the mom, took stuff over there for them and the family. Like, we do this every single day. Gunshot victims, people who's been killed, we take food, water, stuff out of our pockets. We don't have no funding for it, but we've been doing it for years, on top of years, on top of years. And all I'm here is to tell you, Mr. Spoon, I thank you for the safe hours that you do provide for us in our community, and you are one of our community leaders, and thank you. Want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Spoon.
You're all right. So. When y'all sleep at night, just think about, like, these are the kids, nine-year-old kid. Like, no one has reached out to them in the community.
I want to thank you very much, Ro and Jamal.
Hey, Rosie, those pipes getting a little bit thin. I'm teasing you with those arms.
Oh. Thanks for coming down here today, man. I always tell you, if you ran it from there, I think you would win it. I mean, he's really that big a person in our community, to be honest with you. I mean, you might not know that, but, you know, his influence is big, so thanks for all you do, Ro. Appreciate you.
Yeah, and I just, I wanted to address the young man, just.
Jamal.
Jamal. I just don't want you to let this discourage you, you know? We want to see great things out of you, and we want you to continue on a good path. Don't let this make you sad or bitter. You know, we hope is that you get stronger and that with the help of the people around you, you succeed.
Good morning. My name is Bill Heath. I'm one of the co-members of Men of Community, and I moved here from San Diego three years ago and had worked with kids out there for 40 years, owned originally from Erie, and moved back here three years ago. I live outside the city, but the first thing I did was get in contact with people in the African-American community to connect with inner-city kids. So I've been, I've worked with the last three years with the Metro Football League, Mr. Witherspoon's, you know, I've become friends through his phenomenal efforts over many years in Erie. I was, I was a young boy when he was playing basketball again, and I was, he was one of my idols, so I'm not that much younger than him, but anyway. My concerns are very basic. It's about love and care for kids. You know, we have to, we have to forget about the politics, forget about what level we're at in life. I was a successful business guy in San Diego, still have a business there. That doesn't mean anything. It doesn't matter the clothes I wear, it's basically what's here, and we're missing it. We're missing it as people, period. When I came back to Erie, one of the things I thought, there's not that much change in Erie, not that much change. I was gone 40 years. He was come back here every year because I have family here, and some of the same roadblocks. And, you know, I run a business. The old-style business was the vertical where the guy at the top, all the communication from top to bottom. Today's world in business, everything's horizontal. This is what we need to create in this city, the horizontal communication where I'm accessible, you, anybody want me to do anything for kids, I'm 25 minutes outside the city. I can be here in 25 minutes, and it's the same thing. We all need to be accessible to one another. I've made a really, really great effort to be involved in, in the city and sat with 35 coaches in Metro Football League, and just because I care about kids, and these aren't paid positions, what Ro does, what Anthony does, we've got to be really close friends just because we care. We need your help every day. You know, I was in the metro, every Sunday I went to Metro Football League. I never saw a city leader there, and it shouldn't matter, it shouldn't matter about politics, it shouldn't matter about anything other than caring for kids. When you have 390 kids in a league and we don't have anybody in this room coming to see them play, every Sunday I went. I'd go to mass, I'd tell my wife, I'm gone for three hours, just because, just because. That's what, that's what we got to have. We really need your help. We really need your help and your, your, everybody, just not in this room today, but every, every day, we need your help, because these guys are dedicated. I'm an old man. These guys are young guys. This is the next group, and the kids are the ones that are suffering. There's nobody, there's nobody else that's suffering in this city more than the kids. And everybody says the violence is terrible, this and that, you know? It's all about role modeling. It's all about coaching, role modeling, being there every day, and working together, and that's what we need from you guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Lionel Hemmer. I've been working with Mel Witherspoon for the last 33 years out of Spoon's Court on the behalf, been here for the kids, you know, like, it's a blessing to see them to be out there every day between 5:00 and 9:00, having a good time and enjoying themselves. Not only that, they'll be getting an opportunity to be able to speak with us so we can mentor them in terms, you know, about just, not just only just basketball, but things in life in general. And like Ro was saying, you know, y'all need to come out there to see that, to see what these kids have, who they're working with, you know, to talk to them, mentor them, let them know that everything should be good, you know? See, to watch them, to come out there. We have a five-year-old, a six-year-old kid come out there, want to know how old he have to be to play, and we have to tell him nine-years-old, and they wait till they turn calm, and once they get there, they enjoy that. They enjoy it because they're there waiting, and it's a beautiful thing to be there, because I've been there just for 33 years, and I love working with kids, and I've been doing it all my life. I was an assistant basketball coach with Strong Vision with Shannon Porter for 17 years, and that's one thing that I, that I base myself on is like doing what I can within the community for the last 33 years, dealing with these kids, not knowing what's going on in their household, what they might be going through, you know, what might be happening, but sometimes you get a lot of them, they may open up to you, talk with you, and you try to, you know, explain to them and try to get them a general idea, you know, how to go about life, and just know enough living in the city of you, because we have seen a lot of violence, you know, over the years. The young man that y'all speaking of, like, that Jamal, he's like a nephew to me. He's like a nephew to his mom, he's like a niece to me, and to hear that, to see things like that happening, it really touches my heart. It really makes me realize and understand that, man, we need to do a lot more in this city, you know, to help these young kids, because right now, you know, it's about to get out of control. If we don't put a handle on it right now, do what's right, you know? I mean, I see you guys set up on this panel, but it would be nice to see y'all in the community too as well, you know, showing y'all support as well. Let them know that y'all just, not only just here just for theirs, but for them too also. Okay? And it would be great to see y'all, be loving and kind and caring, all right? Because that's what it's all about. Each one teach one, each one have to love each other. We always say it takes a village to raise a community, but it takes also, man, togetherness too, you know, and understanding and being there and caring about these kids, because if we don't get them now, we don't, we're going to lose them later, not only to the streets, but to whoever, you know? So just get a handle on it, let's grab a hold of it. Mel, I appreciate you, man, for the time that, the opportunity you gave me to be able to be part of, you know, spoons, you know? So I'm almost about to go in tears up here, you know what I mean? Getting very emotional. All right? So if we can also get y'all guys to step up, do what we need to do in this community, it'll be a great big help. Thank you.
Mr. President, Lionel Hemmer is my chief security along with the city police, and his nickname on the court is Big Dog. And they listen to him when he talk.
Yeah, they do. My brother's a first child, and I'm there, he took me all the time, and I get, you know, fearful too, out there, so when the kids see that, they know how to, you know, control themselves and be a good age. When you're not there, you got more trouble, you hear that, so I'm sorry, but yeah.
Can someone make sure that we have a list of the schedules for the Metro Football League for Sundays? I don't have that information. I know we get information on spoons games, but I don't think we get any information on the football league. It'll be nice to know, because we're off on, well, we work a whole other job, so it'd be nice to know on our free time what's available so that we can probably go to it, because I try to make sure I show up as much as possible, and, you know, I can sit through a football game or two.
We, that was the Jones that came in last year. They gave us the schedules, so, yeah, I bet. Mike and I went to a couple of practices, ran some sprints. No, we didn't run sprints, but we went to some of the practices.
All right, guys, I'm Anthony McGowan at 5226 Lexington Street. It's in Mill Creek. I don't live in Erie, but I own several properties here in Erie, and I work and do business here in Erie, city of Erie. I just, I am part of MLC, which stands for Men of the Community. We are men of the community, and I want to invite all of you guys to our fifth annual Fund Day, Community Fund Day. It's a community-building Fund Day. I've already spoken with, briefly about it with Ms. Faulkner about collaborating with the sisters, and so I want to invite all of y'all. It's a safe, it's a safe event that we have every year. We actually just, actually putting a name to it now. We started out as just friends who grew up in the neighborhood to say, hey, let's do a give back, whether we do school give back or we just want to give back to the community, just try to build the community up. So it's a August 19th, that's on a Saturday, it's going to start at noon, right around 12 o'clock noon. You guys are all invited to come out. It's a community-building Fund Day that we do. We have bounce houses, clowns, a couple dance groups going to come out and perform. It's going to be a nice event, so just want to invite you guys to, which will be officially the Men of the Community first, but it's our fifth annual Fund Day, August 19th, okay, guys? So you guys all invited.
Where will it be? Where will it be and what time?
It'll be on 22nd and Wayne, it will be. It's going to start at noon. We tend to block the, block the street off from Wayne to Perry, and we'll set up a stage out there and bounce houses and clowns, face painting clowns, bring the kids out. We have free hot dogs for the kids, there'll be some vendors out there. Be a nice community event. We have tables, chairs, tents for you guys to come out, so you guys are welcome out and invite somebody, you know? You guys want to come out and hand out brochures or whatever you have going on, you want to hand out pamphlets, invite someone out. So we want to just invite you guys out to that event, okay? And everyone out to that event, right?
Yeah. Thanks.
Anthony, thanks for, thanks for all you do, man. I appreciate it.
That's right by that ice cream place. I went to it last year, they got, yeah. Anyone else from the community to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Ma'am, did you want to speak? I see your hand raised before you.
Ah, sorry.
Well, I'm a citizen of Erie, PA, and I live on Glendale. I see some kids, you know, if they had real councils around and go places, learn to read and everything, and transportation, and places for them to go where they'll stay out of trouble, where, you know, before it get too bad, and they need more help out there, and, you know, they're just regular kids, but they getting there, and, you know, people shouldn't have to deal with this all the time, and there's, where places they should go, like, maybe like the centers or something, where, you know, they could study, and maybe preachers are coming, the community may could help too, you know, besides other people, and maybe you could give us a hand sometime, you know? Because these kids really need help. There's some good kids, but other kids will lead them that way, but they need all the help they could get, you know, because they don't have it, especially in the poorer areas in there, and they do need help there. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you do something about that.
All right, let me try this again while watching. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Yeah, come on up.
Yep, you got it.
Just walk on up.
Give your name and address.
You get five minutes and just provide your name and address at the beginning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Richard Adams. I'm an electrical contractor. I live in the city of Erie, 4301 Stanley Avenue. I'm, I've been doing this all my life. My father was an electrician before me. I don't get why we can't walk into city hall, up into the inspection office anymore. What's, what's the holdup? Pandemic's over. Used to be able to come in here and drop your things off, talk to the inspector, now it's all no face-to-face. Our mayor said to us, he wanted everyone to be friendly. Well, how can we be friendly if we're not talking to anybody? I don't know the new girls in the office. I used to know all the girls in the office. You know, if you needed something, you could call them and ask them. They'd find out, it was personalized, you know? I don't want to offend anybody. I'm, I just don't understand why it's so removed. I think we need to make a plan to do it, not just me up here telling you that this is my complaint. I don't want to, it sounds like I'm complaining to you, but if you're going to complain, you got to complain to the people that can do something, and that's city council. So help us out here, every one of us. Every one of the contractors is frustrated with it. Another example, courtesy parking lot. Why is it every time we come here, it's full of police cars? They're in our courtesy spots, not the car, the police car, but somebody that works here. That's not right. I complained to Jim Winarski about it, and he told me, well, we'll get you a spot down in the garage, and I'm like, that's not, that's not the answer. And I'm not mad at them, I get it, you know? But at some point, really? Aren't we, aren't we defeating the purpose of people coming down? You're here to serve us, we're paying somebody, everybody in here. Little help, Council, please, for all of us? I'm not scolding you, please don't be offended. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, and I don't, it just seems that the further we go, the further we're walking away from one. We can't talk to one another, how are we ever going to become friends? Kindness goes a long way. Appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
You too.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number 16368, official ordinance 452023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $325,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED local share account for bomb squad response vehicle equipment. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council ordinance bill number sixteen three sixty-eight, and now known as official file ordinance forty-five twenty twenty-three. Be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance forty-five twenty twenty-three by nays seven, by yea seven, nays zero. Council file number sixteen three seventy-one. An ordinance, uh, official ordinance forty-six twenty twenty-three. An ordinance appropriating the sum of six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. From, from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof. For the construction phase of the city of Erie milling and asphalt resurfacing. Federal aid, local routes, various streets, PennDOT Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Agreement R two two zero one zero 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 seven. And R two two zero one zero 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 six, zero zero six, and E C M S one one nine zero zero two. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. The council file ordinance number sixteen three seventy-one, and now known as official file ordinance forty-six twenty twenty-three. Be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance forty-six twenty twenty-three by yea seven, nays zero. Council file number sixteen three seventy-two. Official ordinance forty-seven twenty twenty-three. An ordinance appropriating the sum of seven thousand, seven thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. For the expenditure thereof, funds are from the Lurde fees collected in the community reinvestment fund. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three seventy-two. And now known as official file ordinance forty-seven twenty twenty-three. Be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance forty-seven twenty twenty-three, finally by yea seven, nays zero. Council file number sixteen three seventy-three, official ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty-three. An ordinance appropriating the sum of eighteen thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. For the expenditure thereof, funds are from the Lurde fees collected in the community reinvestment fund. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three seventy-three. And now known as official file ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty-three, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance forty-eight twenty twenty-three, finally by yea seven, nays zero. Council file number sixteen three seventy-four. Official ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-three.
Motion to table? Is that, do we need to read it first? Yeah, motion to table.
Second.
Here's a motion to table, council file number sixteen three seventy-four, official ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-three. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Motion to table passes yea seven, nays zero. Council file number sixteen three seventy-five, official ordinance fifty twenty twenty-three.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table. Uh, council file ordinance sixteen three seventy-five, official ordinance fifty twenty twenty-three. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Motion to table passes, seven, nothing. Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen three seventy-six. An ordinance appropriating the sum of four million dollars. From unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as a transfer from the residential construction. And development revolving loan fund. These funds will be utilized in the urban core economic recovery revolving loan fund. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Faulkner. The council file ordinance number sixteen three seventy-six, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen three seventy-six, by yea seven, nays zero on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance.
Second.
Any separations?
Number two.
Any other separations?
No.
Moving the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Motion passes, seven, zero. We're reading number two, sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Brzinski. Resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate East Fourth Street between French and Holland Streets. As Monsignor Henry Kriegel Way. For his fifty-second, fifty-two years of dedicated service to the diocese of Erie. Spending his last assignment for twelve years at Saint Patrick's Church. Discussion?
Yeah, maybe suggest that we do something more than a little green sign. Last time we had Mr. Brennan work on a special sign for Mr. Hagan on West Sixth Street. I think for the Kriegel, should have more than a little aluminum sign, if we're gonna do it, we should probably do it right.
We had a, um, we had some parishioners reach out, and I'm really excited to uh, see the Monsignor uh, recognized. He had a, a large retirement party at the time during our last council meeting where uh, where I gave his parishioners assurance that, that we would be able to get this on this agenda. Um, so that he could be assured that we would be uh, recognizing him, so they made that announcement, we would've done it last meeting, but we were worried he'd find out on the agenda. That somebody would tip him off, so. Uh, so we had to wait. Um, so I'm, I'm excited to be a part of this, and um, and looking forward to recognizing him in some way. Call for the vote, unless, call for the vote?
Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Motion passes, yea seven, nays zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Any volunteers to start this thing off?
Oh, go.
Alright, we'll go from right to left.
Sad day and yet a happy day, uh, we're gonna be losing Mike Outlaw. Former East High warrior, by the way. Uh, did an awful lot of good things for this city, and he was recognized for it. He's gonna be doing it now for five different states here. Uh, along the Atlantic coast. Uh, Mike Outlaw, we're gonna miss you. Uh, we're gonna see you at room thirty-three tomorrow night to officially say goodbye, there's Mike. And uh, thank you for all the things you did, all those ice cream cones for the kids. Uh, they'll never forget you, we won't either. Uh, other than that, uh. Ms. Slomsky took over as assistant director at the Port Authority. Uh, talked to Mr. Pye and everything is going along schedule, in fact, better than schedule. Uh, with the civic center. And uh, that kinda wraps it up, it's summertime and everybody wants to get as much done as they can get done. And still get as much sun as they can too. Thank you, have a good day.
I don't really have much of a committee report, we have meetings coming up in the coming weeks, we have a bladed property. Um, meeting coming up and then an E M T A meeting coming up, but I can report on those at the following meeting. Um, it's summertime, so there's lots of community events and lots of community functions, so I try to make sure that I attend as much as possible. So if you would like us to show up to anything, I definitely recommend that you let the clerk's office know so that we can maybe fit it in our regular work schedule and our city council's schedule. I pride myself on trying to be very available to my community, so I would like to go forward with that um, as well. I also recommend that people pay attention to the eight-one-four concert series, that's almost coming to an end, and then we have Celebrate Erie also coming up. Um, soon, it'll be at the end of the month, so I definitely recommend that people look up the websites so that you know when these functions are going on. I also wanted to take a moment to address the young man who was shot in our community. Bullets don't have names, and it is a risk for a community to be. Um, at danger of just going out and being in your community and possibly being shot because other people have weapons that they might not. Necessarily have licenses for, or should even have access to. So I do applaud the gentlemen who are making time for the community and our um, city, because you know. You need to be the role model you didn't get to see as a child, and I pride myself on trying to be the person that I wasn't able to see as a young person. I had a bunch of adults that I didn't wanna be anything like growing up, and I pride myself that I'm nothing like a lot of people. So you have to make sure that we encourage our young people to be the best that they can be, but we also need to make sure that we're available to them. So I do recommend that, you know, we do support the young people in our community because we have to be big brothers and big sisters, I'm the oldest of thirteen. And I know that sometimes kindness is the best way, thank you.
Councilman Keys?
I would just like to echo uh, some of the personal comments uh, from citizens, concerns from the citizens and uh, from. Ms. Councilwoman Flores, that uh, we have to. Take a more holistic approach at of. At uh, looking at the violence in our city. Uh, and some things do cost money. And we do need to invest in things for our youth. Infrastructure for our youth. And uh, it, and it takes a village, it takes a more robust involvement. Uh, from the community at large, and so uh. And so, you know, uh, just, you know, look at yourselves, you know, look at the people in your family. You know, uh, see if you have an hour or two here or there to support a local initiative. Uh, or a, something that's going on with the youth. That's, that's my challenge until, you know, the next time I see you. Support one of these organizations, some of their events.
Lemonade stands.
Thing to do.
Whatever we have going on.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to congratulate Mr. Outlaw. Uh, he's moving to another position. It's a good move for him, but it is a loss for us. I enjoyed working with him. Uh, throughout the years, time that I've known him. Uh, he has supported uh, just about everything we've done. And we're losing a good man. Uh. I wanted to thank uh, Mr. Hamer, Big Dog. And Roe and Jamal and Bill Heath. For coming down today. Believe it or not, it was a surprise to me. Uh, but. Our league is about kids, it's not about me, it's just the name. And this is, we're celebrating thirty-three years right now. And uh, hopefully I can do another thirty-three years. I don't know if I'll be sitting up here though. But. Um, it's, it's about our future, it's about a kid. And when uh, a nine-year-old gets shot. It's. There's nothing else to say about that, but we took immediately as uh, Mr. Benjamin stated. Immediately, we supported the family. And it wasn't about basketball, it's about supporting a family that was in need immediately. And Bill will never say it, but he came in a very big way. And helped that family in total. Jamal has, I believe, five other brothers and sisters. And Bill helped that entire family. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Troop?
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, first wanna start off by echoing uh, Mr. Brzinski's comments about uh, Michael Outlaw. Um, we grew up in the same neighborhood, so always say we went from the neighborhood to city hall. Uh, Woodlawn, Glendale area. Um, I believe we sat in the same classroom from kindergarten to fifth grade, Burt and Bumblebees. So um, congratulations on everything you've done, helped our city. I'm sure you, the city will still be at heart, you'd be willing to help me even in your new position, so. And uh, whoever fills your shoes definitely has big shoes to fill. So, also wanted to um, uh. Announce an event that I'm doing on August thirteenth. I've been doing this event since two thousand and ten annually. It's called Blues for Shoes, it's a fundraiser for kids. Um, the local musicians come together, as you know, I'm a musician. Um, it'll start at four o'clock at the big bar, and we raise money for school supplies for youth. And we've raised thousands of dollars over the years, um, and then we give those school supplies, clothes, sneakers, away to youth of the community. So that's August thirteenth. I wanna thank all the local musicians who have done it over the years and those who will be doing it again this year. Like I said, most people in the community really do care, if you just ask them to help out, they will help out. I, I wanna echo Roe's comments too. Um, Malcolm X kinda made his uh, quote one day about leadership in some of these inner city communities. And he's, he's kinda said in his book like, some of the leaders aren't always the guys that are wearing the suits, and that's what Malcolm X kinda said. Some of the biggest leaders in some of these inner cities, in some of these neighborhoods, in any neighborhood, are not always the people who. Are on TV or, you know, with the suit on, some of the, all the guys that live right, or people, mothers and fathers that live right in the neighborhood you don't ever hear about, so. We do wanna take, you know, and he's one of those type of people in our community. So, Mr. President, that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, Mr. President, we're talking about fundraising? How do we have a little uh, Big Dog Spoon one-on-one? Charge twenty-five bucks, come in? We'll take care of the kids. We do slow mo, just a thought.
Alright.
Councilman Faulkner?
Alright, um, I wanna start with something that is uh, not necessarily a committee report, um, but is something that's important public information. Uh, a recent study came out that up to seven hundred thousand Pennsylvanians are at risk of losing their Medicaid and CHIP coverage. Uh, this is mass, this is massive, um, and this is because the end of pandemic era relief around uh, Medicaid and CHIP. So please, please, uh, if you know folks in your life, um, who access those benefits. Um, or you yourself are on Medicaid, or you have a child in your life who uh, is on CHIP. are on Medicaid, or you have a child in your life who is on CHIP, please log into compass.state.p.a.us or just search PA Medicaid or PA Compass. This would be, we already see the root causes of violence such as poverty impacting our community with shootings and increased violence, losing your healthcare coverage, having some sort of accident and being drowning in medical debt is another way that perpetuates poverty. And so whatever we can do to ensure that 700,000 fellow Pennsylvanians do not lose coverage is key. So it takes, it takes a village, as it does with anything, with our youth and families. On top of that, I received some information from members of the public surrounding the quality of life ticketing, and I know we talked about the increases of those, those fines to try to address things like blight and neglectful landlords. I've received pictures of some properties that seem vacant, that just are not on code enforcement's radar, places like 2407 June Street, which is 16510. So I will send that information to code enforcement as well, but I just encourage the public, if you do see those problem blighted properties in your neighborhood, reach out to the Citizen Response Center, reach out to City Hall so that we can have better, better information on that and ensure that that program is enforced. General committee report, as public safety liaison, I met with police leadership last week. We talked about mostly positive trends with our crime statistics at the six-month mark for the city, which is good to see. The one area where that is not trending in the right direction is around sexual assault and rape in our city. This is a chief concern, especially as a young woman, so I encourage folks and survivors to reach out to the Crime Victim Center. Their email is, or their website is cbcerey.org, or their phone number is 814-455-9414. We saw positive momentum in every, and reductions in crime in every area of our city except for sexual assault and rape. So this is something that I'm going to continue to talk to police leadership about so we can better address as a community at large, whether it's education or prevention. It was, it's been a very busy time for police. The last two weeks, there was around 1,300 calls per week for service. In forty-eight hours last week, there were four people shot, including two children. So I think as all of us have echoed today, that is a real crisis that needs a collective response. Fire as well, possibly set a record for calls for service with 395 calls for service last week, including three building fires. Aside from that, myself and Vice President Flores have been working really diligently over the last four months to talk about housing solutions. We held a special meeting two weeks ago on community housing resources. It was a really great chance to bring different leaders to the table, as well as folks who have experienced homelessness, to understand what are some areas, issues where we need policy reform, where there's barriers to service. So that was a great start to a conversation, as well as last week's DCD Subcommittee meeting with Councilman Keyes. I was very frustrated to hear from our city department that there is a delay in service in folks being able to access home rehab funds, first-time homeownership funds, for one simple reason, and that is because we have a lack of lead-certified contractors in the city. The Redevelopment Authority used to offer funds for that certification, and so this is some red tape that I am personally outraged over, and definitely we need to do something about. So it is, it is a travesty that service is being held up simply for a lack of certified contractors. So that's not, not a good enough, not a good enough reason to slow down those kinds of services. Additionally, I've been working with local and state lawyers and advocates who specialize in displacement, free development, and homelessness prevention to talk about possible ordinances to prevent unnecessary evictions, especially for low-income residents. This is often the point where someone does become homeless or can no longer access public housing because they have an eviction on their record. So I'm looking at just cause eviction ordinance possibly for the city. I appreciate President Nelson, Vice President Council, and City Solicitor Betsa for meeting with me last week to talk about those solutions. It's not always the most fun thing to talk about policy reform and housing policy reform, but when we live in a state that does not have strong tenant protections, we have to do more at the city level to protect folks. I think that's it.
Thank you. A couple of questions for my colleagues. Did you say it's not fun to address policy? Is that what I heard out of you?
It's not always the most fun thing to address those behind the scenes.
I got a different impression from you over the last few months, Ms. Faulkner.
I personally love it, but I think there are some, there are some things in our city where we are, we are addressing the problem once it happens and not the, the symptoms that lead to it.
And, and then I heard you give that address. Mo, have you been mowing your lawn? That address is real close to your house, isn't it? All right, just so. It sounded, it sounded pretty close, I wasn't sure.
Wait, no, that's not me. I'm like, you've been performing a lot.
All right. You know, I, I think that a lot of the work I've been doing has been reported in the press lately. So we tabled two ordinances for CRIZ. I came home Monday after meeting with Mr. Witherspoon and the mayor, and I told my wife that, and then I shared it on Facebook because I thought it was witty, how much I appreciate how council works together for consensus while not being adverse to conflict. So, you know, I think that council had come together very nicely to, to build consensus and address concerns of certain stakeholders. However, as both of them have been tabled today, CRIZ is not a program that's currently open in Harrisburg. There are some things that need to be worked out before it would be open, and we can't at this time have the city getting ahead of Harrisburg. And that's just, that's just where we're at today. We'll continue to have a lot of meetings, as has been exhausting for the last couple of months, and, and I think Renee is probably the most exhausted from any of it. But I've been really happy with the support and the progress that's occurred in these last couple of weeks, encouraged about how that's going to look moving forward, and, and I'm still hopeful that, that that progress will, will reach a conclusion that is beneficial to our city. That's all I really have to report on the matter, and that's pretty much been all my work lately. Mr. Solicitor?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Chief Staff.
I have a few things. First, I just, I want to say, you know, Spoons Basketball League is one of, one of the best programs I think we have at the city. It's engaged thousands of students in the last thirty-three years and really saved a lot of lives, I think, and appreciate that, all that you have done, Councilmen. Also, last night was National Night Out, and I know I saw a lot of you out and about. We got to thirteen of the ones in the city. We missed a couple, I think, but it was really great to be out and see everybody and, and to just, you know, be in the neighborhood with, with, with people. On the CRIZ, just to kind of echo Council President Nelson, you know, we, I think we're, we're moving pretty quickly, and that's because we want to be prepared if and when the window does open. And it looks like the state is going to be making some changes to the CRIZ, and so we just want to make sure with our ordinance that we're incorporating that and that we're, we're covering all of our bases before we pass something. So hopefully we'll be able to move quickly on that. As Councilwoman Flores mentioned, we have two more of the 814 Concert Series coming up. The next one is Sunday, August sixth. We have the Drum Circle at four o'clock in Franklin Park on West Seventh and Marn Road. And then at 5:30, we're going to have a special performance by the Cadets. And then at six o'clock, West Indian Revelation will be playing. So we're looking forward to that. And then on Monday night, we have Sounds of Summer. This one will be at Nightingale Nursing Home at 7:00 PM, 607 East Twenty-Sixth Street. And we have the Erie Trombone Collective playing. And then, just quickly here, because we won't have another council meeting before, the last 814 Concert Series will be at Bakerfield at East Thirty-Second and Holland with the Groove at 6:00 PM, and that's August thirteenth. Then, of course, Drum Circle at four o'clock. We always do the Drum Circle first. And then on the fourteenth, the final Sounds of Summer will be at Curry Shell Apartments at 7:00 PM, Monday, August fourteenth, and that's with the Presque Isle Little Big Band. And then after that, we launch into Celebrate Erie that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So it's going to be a very busy time, but we look forward to seeing everybody out. The 814 Concert Series has continued to grow each week, and it's, and it's really great that we can bring music to our neighborhoods within the urban core. On the Roger Young Resolution, we look forward to seeing the proposal for that, and I just want to update everyone, we're, we're in the process of working with DCNR, who provided us with a grant to do a comprehensive citywide parks and rec plan. And we've been, you know, informed by several granting agencies that once we have that plan complete, then we will be able to go after grant funds, and so we're looking forward to doing that. We have $4 million in ARP funding set aside to be used on parks within the qualified census tracts to make improvements to our community, and there will be a lot of community outreach and input into that plan. And then finally, I just want to thank Michael for everything he's done for the city the last five and a half years, and wish him well on this next chapter in his career. Thank you, sir.
City Council adjourns at 10:04 AM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon.